Mean order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebraska governing body, the city of Seward v. the Nebrasko meetings act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebrasko meetings act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium, save their name and address for the clerk's record, and our asked limit remarks to five minutes. Our remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome back here, Cameron.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Ian.
All right, the first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of January nineteenth, twenty sixteen.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
Item number two, consideration of consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
A motion and a second is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
Because we have another meeting going on that the next presenter, actually for item six, Becky Baker, we're gonna move six up to three so that she can get to her other meeting tonight. So that is the presentation of library annual report, Becky.
Thank you. This year, we decided to do a more visually appealing report, so I hope it was easy for you to look at. Lots of pictures, charts and graphs, not so many words. But we had a great year, lots of big things happening, and I think the pictures and some of the highlights that are in here kind of bring out that we're becoming more than just a book repository. We're more of a programming kind of place, a place for people to gather and that kind of thing. So it's kind of expanding what we do. Well, of course, we're not leading the pod anything that we've already been doing. That's my presentation. Do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Said less than two minutes.
That was less than twenty seconds. Any questions for Becky? See, I just want to say thank you for all that you do at the library. We're very proud of the library that we have here in Seward. With that, good luck at your next meeting, I guess. That concludes item number six. We'll then jump back up to item number three. Confirmation of mayor's appointments. We'll do these by letter, or we should just by board. The first, three A is Parks and Recreation Board. This is the appointment of Jim Plaki, and the reappointments of Lana Urbahn and Andrea Bach.
Second.
We have a motion and a second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display your votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
Item three B, this is the Seward Agent Services Commission. This is the reappointments of Jeannie Jerry and Roger Hans.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
Item number three C, Citizen Advisory Review Committee. This is the reappointment of Stan Obermiller.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
Item three D, the Civic Center Commission, reappointment of Rick Endicott.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
Item three E, the Planning Commission. This is the appointment of Jeremy Tunnies, and the reappointments of Chuck Latira and Kevin Gustafson.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
Item three F, Housing Authority, the reappointment of Brad Perdue.
So move.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
Item G, this is the Assistant Fire Chief. This is the reappointment of Dan Drum.
Move.
Second.
The motion and a second is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
Item four, this is the seven o'clock public hearing. This is the presentation discussion of functioning and progress of the Seward Economic Development Plan. And Greg Walls is here from the Citizen Advisory Review Committee to present. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Greg Walls, seven twenty-six Vator Avenue, here in Seward. We met on the thirteenth of January to review the past six months of activity of the Economic Development Committee. And you should have the minutes of that. If we were with you, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Greg? Seeing none? Guess you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you did a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, and yeah, we still, you're fine. We do need, for the public hearing, we have to have a public comment portion. So I would open it up for anyone from the public to comment on item four. Am I saying it? They usually, don't usually have a rush to the podium, but everyone's welcome. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this, and now you're officially done, Greg. Thanks. Item number five, this is consideration of request by the Seward Swim Club to build a storage facility on city pool property. Richard Goke is here.
Ri- Richard Goke, three thousand three Block Road, Seward. Seward Swim Club's been together for four years now and have around eighty kids that swim for them. They, last year, they used a trailer to store their equipment. There's baffles for the lanes for swimming, the blocks for starting that gets set in and then removed. And they'd like to have a little more permanent building down there. They're looking at a, it's a storage shed like this that comes pre-built. It would sit on the west side of the pump house down there. And it's something that could be removed if it needed to be, got in bad shape like that. They, the trailer they used last year was a six by twelve trailer. This building would be a six, or twelve by sixteen building. And their use with everything they have would pretty well fill up that building. They'd like to have, be the only ones to have a key to it, if that is possible. There's probably about ten thousand dollars worth of equipment they use that's in there, if that's not a problem.
Any questions from the council? Steve, did you have anything you wanted to?
No, we're all working, so. Would a building like that be safe from any vandalism, do you feel?
We had a trailer down there last year. Just had a padlock on it. Nobody bothered it. This building wasn't having windows. Put a lock on it.
I wouldn't see why anybody would vandalize it, but it's always a concern nowadays.
And, you know, stealing any of the equipment out, I don't think there's a big market for that, so.
Any other questions?
Bruce, is there any reason why the city would need a key for emergency purposes?
Well, it probably wouldn't hurt for us to have a key down there, just in case.
Okay.
So I would recommend that we do have one key anyway.
Okay. Yeah, I think maybe we could store it up in City Hall at the master key box in case we need to allocate it to somebody.
Any other questions? Or comments?
Good.
What's on? Was someone making a motion?
I'll make a motion.
This is a request, this is a consideration of request by the Seward Swim Club to build a storage facility on city pool property, and your motion is to allow that?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. We're gonna do a little housekeeping here on, going back to item number four. You heard from Greg regarding this presentation. I think we want a motion just to accept that report.
So move. Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
And just to keep this also clean with the library report, a motion to accept the library annual report would be ordered?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt, motion two.
All right, thank you. Yeah. Item number seven, consideration of request by Seward Chamber first impressions committed to erect a sign on city property.
Yeah, Gary Walters is here as well, just.
Yeah. Come on up. So you don't look like Gary.
Well, he must've got stuck in a snowbank or something. I had no idea he wasn't gonna be here. I think he sent out a letter, everybody got that and read it. In fact, I don't even have one, so I'm kind of guessing what he said in it. Basically what I said, I think. So I suppose the best thing to do is, are there any questions before, from what we had last time on the location? Was there, we looked at it over again, and we have not come up with a different conclusion, as you've probably seen in that letter. And there will be reasons, of course, or the electricity wasn't in the area, would have to buy property. We felt that if we did go, say, a half mile east of the town, by the time, you know, we get around to another ten years or twenty years down the road, the town would be out there anyways, would be inside the city limits. And another thing I think is really nice about this, though, is when you're coming down the hill, even if you've seen the flags before, you'll see this sign, and it won't take very long to just make a curve, and right away, there's a flag. So I think it leaves a good impression, you know, so. And that's what I think we basically come to conclusions. Unless, got some questions or any more checking?
So is the old sign east of Alberta Ford gonna stay there?
See, I've been doing some checking. I'm not sure who all owns that sign. I thought maybe we could use it for something else, but I don't know about the legality of that. We were checking on that stuff. We haven't finished following through on that.
I think the last time, I think the last time that the sign was, when we had to redesign on some of those signs, it was the Chamber that did that. I don't believe the city was directly involved.
I don't think so either, but there is some other little signs below, and I don't know what, what they have involved in that.
And I don't know, those organizations, I don't know, yeah. I assume it would have to be updated and.
I hate to see them lose the right to have it there.
Sure.
You know, because it is an asset for something. So that's something that we could follow through easily.
Yeah, and I'd really like to see, you know, move forward like we asked before to try to get that same location, that sign, find out, you know, what the requirements are to update it, because that's in a perfect spot. That was, you know, our recommendation last time. And, you know, somebody's gotta have the rights to it, especially if it's still sitting there.
Oh, you mean, what you're saying is you'd like to get this sign moved in its place?
I mean, that's the.
I think once you tear a sign down, I don't know what it is to get a new type style up there, you know.
If you're using the existing.
There is such a thing as a monument easement, which might exist on the property. If you do a quick title search to see if there's something on record.
That is, it is a perfect location. You're coming down that hill, you see the sign that Avery updated it last time.
It would cost more money.
And you're not in a flood plain either, because that does get underwater where you want to put it.
That flood plain wouldn't make any difference with the lights on it. It'd have to be material, just like a light pole. But.
Just a comment on that, comment on that billboard. I was, I thought this is eighteen years ago, whatever, that first sign that went in there, I did back when I was doing signs for the Chamber. And whoever owns that farm ground, basically, you know, gave them an easement. And the N D O R's requirements back then is you couldn't have any new signs that were commercial, but if they were community oriented, like "Welcome to our town", then they would allow that. It wasn't, you couldn't go to Joe's Body Shop or anything. And so I think back then, in ninety-eight, I think, when that was first put up, it was basically paid for by the Chamber, and then the landowner just agreed to let them have that little cut into their farm ground.
What about the signs underneath of it?
Well, the Kiwanis and all that stuff, that was just, those were all community organizations, so that nothing was a private business who could profit from it at all, it was the community.
The new sign is not proposed to have any other signs on it?
Yeah, like I say, it's been a long time since I was, but I know back then that the V O T and N D O R would allow a sign if it was community focused, not commercial, so.
Barb?
If I remember, I think that if the group wanted their name on it, they had to pay something toward that sign. So, you know, I know Kiwanis did that. I don't know what other groups did, but it seems to me they had to pay something toward the sign. It wasn't just that sign, they had another one, did they, on the west side of town at the time, or something? So there were a couple of them. So I don't know what you would do with this one. It'd be nice to have some of those groups listed, but, you know, if you're not looking at that, I guess.
Yeah, I'd take a kick away from a sign. That's why we thought this would be nicer there, because it.
So it's more of a monument kind of sign, like some of those?
Have you seen the sign?
Well, it was probably on the letter, but I didn't.
It was in the packet.
Was it?
Two or three months ago.
Yeah, three, it's been.
It's been a while.
I just heard it out about two seconds ago.
Because there are some nice community signs out there.
This is the way, the latest that it would be.
Okay.
I don't know if everybody's got that in there. And this would be L E D lit. The big letters, not the "Welcome to" would not be. The steel proposed would be the Hughes Brothers, just like in front of the museum, National Guard Museum. I think this is, I forgot, you know, about twenty, fifteen, sixteen foot high. I don't know, we'd have to take another look, too, how we review that. That wasn't, I didn't know you proposed it. I thought you would propose you to look east further.
No, we asked to look into the current sign.
Sides, yeah, yeah.
But also the current sign.
Keep the one we had, so.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I'd really recommend that, you know, that, you know, like Sid was saying, it's already got an easement, check into that easement rights. That is a perfect location. And then come back. You don't have to check into the easement, see if they could do it there.
Yeah, I would like to have this for the fourth, but I don't know if we'll make it. You know, we've lost a couple of months, right? It's really, anyway, okay.
Is there any electricity close to their plants at all?
CRA is across the road. We do have a primary there. We'd have to hang a transformer in the city area.
Still we, I'll bet, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm still we. Of course, I'd have to have a transformer, and then go across the highway somehow, under it, over it. Because you wouldn't want this sign out there without lighting.
Did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, like I just said. Go ahead and look into the options of the easement, and then come back to the council.
No, the easements, I thought we had. Not really.
Well, I think if you want to put it where the billboard is, you gotta find out who the landowner is, and if they're willing to let you do something different, because.
Will the state let us do something different?
I don't know, I don't remember who the landowner was. You know, things could have changed hands through generations or whatever. They may say, you know what, if you don't want this sign here, we want our ground back, so.
Sid Beckler's and Chris's farm, so there's, you can check within them.
If you want to do this, it would be a limited title.
I was in your school, but I don't know about now.
A limited title opinion for a couple hundred bucks will get you what you want. For a hundred and twenty-five, whatever the company's charged for that.
So is the motion to do that?
Yes. And then the landowner, like, the farm, people are farmed as Sid and Chris Beckler, so you can check to see who the landowners.
There's real motion, is there a second?
Second.
The motion and a second is ready for discussion. I just wanted to add one thing. I know you've been working on this for a while. Is there anything else that the council would want, things they're gonna wanna know? Because I hate for this to happen, and then come back in, whether it's two weeks or a month, and then have something else that the council feels it needs to make a decision. Is there any way to, I guess, anticipate any other information that you might want in the meantime that we can then gather so that we can give Clarence and his group, you know, an answer at that time?
Should have the cost, you know.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Yes.
Also, if people are, like, the Kiwanis are paying for that sign, they might need to have some kind of a heads up, at least to know, you know. They, if they.
The new sign are not paying. We have to move.
Yeah, I'm saying, if we remove the old sign, they should at least be aware of that, what's taking place, if they have contributed.
We probably want to remove the sign unless we're within that spot.
Okay.
Yeah, so I believe the original motion was what Kelly proposed. And Kelly, you want to restate that?
We're a limited title opinion for where this present signed monument is, to determine what the proper easements are, and who's the record of title holder of the property.
Okay, and Sid, was that okay to second that?
Yes, just one more comment.
Yeah, I did, too.
So basically, what we're saying is that we don't want them to put it on the city property where you're proposing. We want them to think about putting it where that billboard was, right?
Correct.
I believe that's what Johnson.
But we're not making an official decision?
No, right from now.
No, no. Because we want to need an easement for our property. If we decide to put it on the city's property, it would just be an issue of easement on the property on the south side.
And I'd also like, what Sid was bringing up about the N D O R, make sure you got approval for both sites before we do anything, too. And make sure when it comes to council saying it was approved for either location, you know, that's something that we need to really check in for either location, to verify. Because you got lighting involved, and the height, and all that all pertains to the N D O R.
Okay. So we have the original motion, and we can handle the other stuff as well, but let's just stick with the original motion for now. That was seconded by Sid. So we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, Campus Rex Pike, Singleton Schmidt.
Thank you. Item number eight, consideration of supporting new organization of Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership. And we have Jessica Coulterman and Max Wake here to present.
I think that Jessica Coulterman, ten fifty-nine Plainview, I think you have a packet that was shared with you in your handouts for the meeting. I'm not gonna go through everything in it, but I'll just kind of give you some highlights, kind of where we've been and where we're moving forward with this organization, and then basically just answer questions and provide whatever information I can. You know, the way we kind of got started with this was we had the resignation of the Chamber Director, who was also on the council with you, so you knew him. And there'd been past processes where this had been discussed over the course of probably five or seven years. So it just seemed like a good time to revisit that. We had the Chamber Commerce Board retain Kathy to come in and work through this process, and in that process brought in a variety of other organizations, S A D C, Seward County Economic Development Group, people representing Arts Council, Visitors Committee. Milford and U K, yes, for the countywide focus. And we, they put representatives in a room, and they said, let's have some stakeholder meetings and get some information from community people, what they're interested in, and then let's take all those ideas and let's flush them out into a vision. And so we had several meetings that focused specifically just on the vision, I think three meetings. And those were long processes, but we had a lot of collaborative effort from community people from all these different organizations. And so the vision that you have in front of you is what came out of that. You also have in your packet the people who are on that committee that worked through that, and a copy of our meetings that we held and what we kind of did in the meetings. The vision statement, Seward County twenty thirty-five, I think is really comprehensive, and I think it truly captures the essence of all the people that were involved in the process and what they wanted to see come out of it. And so we are moving forward in the next steps, which is basically combining the Chamber with S A D C, Seward County Economic Development, with representatives from the counties, other communities within the county. And that's where we're at tonight. So I know you have lots of questions. I know there's things that you might want to flesh out for conversation. But we'll tell you that we are really excited about this process. We feel like there's a lot of buy-in. This wasn't something that kind of came out of nowhere. We've modeled this off of a lot of other communities around the state. You know, just a few that come to mind. For me, York has a similar structure, Wayne, Brook Flat, Columbus, Lincoln and Omaha have kind of put their Chamber and economic development arms under the same awning. You know, I know there are many questions about the funding. I will tell you, our intention is not to ask for additional funding, but just to maintain level of funding that is currently received. I know there's been questions and thoughts about economic development, and if you're doing Chamber things, does economic development get lost? My answer to you is no, that's not the intention at all. In fact, I think you'll have an even more collaborative focus on economic development. And finally, I hope you like our vision and the things that you've heard from community members who are supporting it, because I think it's comprehensive, and I think it paints a good picture of Seward County, what we want to see that look like in the meantime. So I will open it up for questions.
All right, thank you, Jessica. Are there any questions from the council? Or comments at this point?
I'd just like to say, I can see where there's been a lot of, a lot of time involved in this with the vision statement. And I think I, myself, I think you did a great job.
Thank you. It was a very, very dynamic group that was excited to work on it.
Could you explain how this process would work? We generally, you know, Jonathan as our point person for, a point person for economic development.
Sure.
How is the city of Seward and the other groups then, too? What's the process then? How are we going to know who's paying attention to the city?
Okay, yes, that's a great question. Thank you for asking it. So under this new structure, as you, I think you saw the chart in maybe, that was shared with you, you saw under there there was something that had economic development as a piece, you know, Chamber as a piece. The C E O part at the top, we didn't designate, is that person an economic development focused person, or is that person a Chamber person? Because we aren't sure at this point what that person looks like and how they play. But I will tell you that is our intention. But I will tell you that is our intent, uh, the people that have been involved with this and, and who many are now probably gonna be on the board. Um, to make sure that there is a designated person that focuses on economic development just as much as you have, if not more. And that that person will interface with the council in the exact same way collaboratively, working through things with you related to economic development. So I, I think that, I hope that answers your question. I, I think that the focus is fully intended and expected to be on economic development and that that will continue. So, you know, whoever that person is sitting at that seat, I think that's the intention, is that we have them interfacing with you as much, if not more than they already have.
So the person who does economic development and maybe a person who does chamber, and the two are still specific and independent to a point?
Right, to a point, I mean, they're obviously, I think that one of the things, um, you have a lot of conversations with different people in this, um. You know, I think we, even just looking tonight and I'm seeing all these people that you, you know, you all approved to be appointed to all these different roles in the community. There's just a finite amount of people who are able to be involved in things. And, you know, I'll just use my. I go to chamber meeting, I go to visitors' club or visitors' committee, cause Clark directs me with that arts council stuff. And then I'm on S A D C, and then I go to S C E D C. And so you have one person that's going to like six or seven or eight meetings in a week, or over a couple weeks. And that's all of us. And so I think the idea is to bring this more collectively collaboratively together, so we can maybe not duplicate on some of those resources for volunteers. So you'll have those two people that maybe have different functions, but help be, there's a little bit of crossover, but our intention is to have a separate distinct. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Sid?
I had a question, Jessica.
Sure.
I noticed that the arts, art council is one of the eight organizations. And I was at the meeting last Thursday, obviously, and you were on that little thing in the middle.
Right, the box on the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so I was looking at like at least, and I had to leave early so I couldn't be there for the whole thing, but. Like on the, on the, when I'm assuming this was like the proposed directors, right? Yes. Um, I don't see anybody from the arts council. And so if they're part of this, you know, anchor group.
Right.
On there, I'm just curious, like, okay, does the art, and, you know, I'm an artist.
Right, no.
Uncle obviously has been big into that. Um, and I'm, I'm just wondering, like, why doesn't the arts council have a person on the board if they're part of the deal?
Um, do you wanna answer that Kathy? I mean, I think we intend to have them collaborating.
Originally, the arts council was part of the chambers, Arts and Culture Committee. And so at the chamber board meeting day, we had that conversation. And so I think they're gonna come back and say, we wanna continue to be part of the structure. And, and you can list this as a Seward Arts Council, which used to be the Arts and Culture Committee of the chamber. So they don't want a board seat, don't need a board seat, they're a five oh one C three organization. We want them to maintain that C three designation for funding purposes and donation purposes. So they'll be involved, they just wanna have a board seat.
So, so they will still be their own independent little corporation?
With collaborating.
Right, so then how many of these other things are still gonna be their own little independent corporation?
Um, the visitors' committee has to be, cause it's, it's a county.
So, I'm just, I'm just crossing, and I'm just looking for the, the real meat of what's gonna be going on here. So the, who'd you say, the visitors' committee?
Visitors' committee.
They have their.
So they're gonna be separate, they're really not gonna be a part of this corporation?
They're, they have a, they're an anchor member, they're more, they're more aligned than, than what they currently are.
So who?
Do a lot of joint things together.
Who is actually being?
Chamber.
S C D C and S A D C.
So it's really just three?
And.
As far as in, in the new corporation?
Yes, but the intention is to bring in more collaboration and communication between the rest as well.
So.
But, but that includes Utica and Milford also, it's not just those three?
Right, right, I mean.
So the Milford Chamber of Commerce will no longer be a separate entity?
No, they, they will, they will, they will retain.
So they're not part of it really, and the Utica Commercial Club will still be their own thing?
We've been referring to is they would become like affiliates.
And the Seward Housing Development Corporation?
That has to stay its own because of task purposes.
Think of it more like an umbrella that is going to cover a number of these groups that will allow them. The, the idea is allow them to talk to each other more easily, um, with the exception of the, the Seward Area Chamber and the S A D C. And the S C E D C, those are the three entities that would essentially merge as part of the umbrella. But like they mentioned, a number of these entities, for their statutory reasons or other reasons, um, would still be affiliated. Uh, but they would not, they would not dissolve their organization, is that fair?
That's correct, thank you for articulating that better than I was.
I don't know if it was better. I'm hopped up on cough syrup right now, so I don't know if that made sense. It made sense in my head.
I don't know what I just said, so.
Look at the tape.
Yeah, exactly. Any other comments or questions? Sid, did you, did you get that?
Well, no, I guess, I mean, as a, as a council member and, and knowing that the city of Seward is gonna be a major funder of this, from what I understand.
The same level that you're funding the two now would be combined.
Right, right. I just, I mean, I was called last week to the meeting on Thursday. And apparently, this has been going on for a while, cause I got this, you know, whatever this is, it's like PowerPoint presentation or whatever. And I'm just, I mean, I'm, I'm a little disappointed that, you know, it looks like, oh, these eight organizations are gonna be, you know. Made into one organization, so my first concern was, is how in the world is one CEO, whoever that is, gonna do all this stuff? So on one, on one part, I'm happy that it's really only gonna be three. But the other part of me says, well, like, no, I feel like it was a little misrepresented, you know, like, there's more support here. It really isn't gonna be all these eight, it's just gonna be three.
Well, like, I'll give you an example of a commercial club in Utica and the, and the chamber in Milford. They've passed resolution, resolutions supporting this and wanting to be a part of it and wanting to see the, the process move forward with them being a part of the collaborative effort. I think, you know, at the same time, they're, they're, they're own entities and they wanna retain a little bit of their own identity. Um, but that doesn't mean that they're not fully supportive of the efforts that are moving forward, if that makes sense, so.
I understand that part.
So really, the part that's being combined is the Seward Chamber and the economic development that's done both the Seward Area, which would be Seward, and then the Seward County Economic Development. So those would be the three entities, and as far as resources, I don't know, the S A D C doesn't have any staff, or, you know.
Right.
But the, the, you would have your chamber staff and you would have S C D C as executive director, that those would be able to be, be merged. And I think the idea is that those resources could be shared. Um, the others are, I think, I think are intended more to be, um, they use the term affiliates, I think of it more like, um, just having an open line of communication. I think one of the concerns that came up in the past is, is that these organizations, while they're all operating in the same county, in some cases the same town, aren't necessarily communicating. And so, some, and, and this is kinda, I don't say silly example, cause obviously pancake feeds are important, um, as a revenue source. But there, there have been, you know, concerns of, well, we scheduled ours, you know, ours is always on this Saturday, and then someone else schedules theirs on this Saturday. And this is the idea of being able to have a consolidated calendar, so everyone is on the same page as far as what events are coming up. And that way, people can schedule without scheduling on top of each other, as one example. I think being able to maybe share an employee or two would be another example where the, the, the idea to have increased efficiencies with that. But you are correct, there'll be a number of, you wanna think of them as orbiting moons, that are gonna be going around this organization that are still connected. By the gravity of, I'm kidding, but they're, yeah, the idea that they're all going to be, yeah, they're, they're connected yet they're separate. So that they're separate in the sense that they're still doing, they're foc, focusing on their priorities, but connected in the essence, in the sense of sharing resources. I don't know if that made any more sense than the last thing Sid said.
And the old, I mean, the, I'm all in favor of consolidating resources and collaborating, all that stuff. The part, and I'm, like I say, it's just the fact that, you know, we have to decide on a budget and decide how much money we're gonna send where. The part that's just a little confusing or curious to me is, I know for a fact that S A D C has a significant amount of liability, financial liability and debt. To property. And I'm just curious, why would the Chamber of Commerce and S C E D C be willing to become a part of an organization that's gonna take on, you know. A significant amount of liability? I just don't see that as a smart decision, just, I'm looking at it from the outside. But it's like, hey, S A D C, take care of your own debt issues, you know, and I don't know what they do. I've asked a lot of questions over the years and it's always been a little bit of a nebulous cloud. I've never really got solid answers, it's always kinda like, well, this or that, you know, but we got all this debt. And I'm just like, like, if I was this Chamber of Commerce or S C D C, I would like say, if I wouldn't wanna be, become a part of this thing that's gonna have all this debt and this property hanging over my head.
Well, and I'm gonna.
Looking from the outside.
Because Max has been involved with S A D C and S C E D C much longer than I have, and I can answer your question, but I, I can tell you the preliminary pipeline is. I think that the people that are involved all believe in the collective vision and moving forward, and so that's what, that's the short answer. But Max, you wanna?
Uh, Max Wake, one thirty-six North Columbia Avenue. And Sid, I didn't bring a, I don't have the exact figures on Seward Area Development Corporation, but I can run through, uh, sort of assets and liabilities. You know, many, several years ago, um, Seward Area Development Corporation was interested in attracting a significant business to Seward. So the Development Corporation constructed, um, the building, uh, south of town. The endeavor was successful in the sense that the business did relocate, but then, because we all know, um. I was gonna say was sold, I'm not sure that it's accurate, they moved, right, they, they left the facility. So Seward Area Development Corporation, um, owns the building, and you're correct, does have debt. The debt was a tool used to build the building and attract the business, you know. It was intended to facilitate economic development, it wasn't debt, just, um, occurred through operations or so forth. I would, I don't have the figures in front of me, the building, uh, I'm confident is worth more than the amount of the debt. Now, that's an assumption, we don't know that, but it should be. But the, the Seward Area Development Corporation would show on paper a positive net worth. We're not, we don't have debt and zero assets, we have assets that I think the value of exceed the debt. We also, you know, despite, and this is sorta how economic development goes, despite good intentions. You know, the original employer of the building didn't stay, but we've ended up with H H S as a significant tenant. They're renting most of the building, employing, again, I don't have the number here, but, but a sizable number of people in, you know, Seward. And the rent that H H S pays exceeds the amount of the payment due on the debt. So we're cash flow positive, even with the, a portion of the building unrented. So in theory, if we had it fully rented, the cash flow position would, uh, improve. So it's a fair question, I mean, you're correct, there is a, there's a loan there, but, you know, I think the reasons for the loan are sound. And, um, you know, based on the value of the building and the rent that H H S is paying, I think it's a manageable debt. You know, that again was incurred to promote economic development, so that's a bit of a history there in my mind.
Max, is that a H S S, H H S, is that on a contract? I mean, that, most of those days expired?
It is, they have a, a contract.
You know, do you know how long it?
I, I don't, I could get that for you, but I don't off the top of my head.
Sid?
Um, and Max, this question isn't necessarily for you.
Sure.
It can be for Jessica or Kathy, right? Yes. I could, just, like I say, it's just curiosity, cause I've, I've, I've been involved, well, never in the chamber, but I was originally involved on the S C E D C board. Um, but, and I'm not singling out S A D C, but, you know, you got all these acronyms floating around and.
It's challenging for us too.
Back when Mr. Schumacher was in town, I went round and round and round with him, and at the end, I was, my head was just spinning. I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about, but anyway, that could be my own business, lack of savvy, but. Just the, the question I have is, I, I understand why the chamber and S E, S C E D C would wanna come together and collaborate and become one thing. I just, I don't know what, what actively has the Seward Area Development Corporation done since the Dan Bread Building? What are they doing now? Like, what projects do they have going? I just, I, I guess I'm looking at, not to degrade what it is or anything, but for my own curiosity. What kind of a economic development activity and drive and focus and vision does S A D C have? Other than this property, what, what the debt, to bring to this new thing? Um, because I'll just be honest, and I'm known for being honest, it looks like a good way to dilute debt into a bigger organization. And then dissolve S A D C, it doesn't exist anymore, and then it doesn't have any debt.
So, uh, two parts, you're, you're referring to the debt, that's true, you know, the asset, which is, is, has value greater than the debt.
Yes, cause you have property out by the box factory too, right?
That's correct.
Good.
So you're exactly right in a sense that S A D C has not been active recently. And that's one reason we'd like to merge it into this new entity. And I don't know all the history here, S A, before S A D C, I think there were a number of competing sort of economic development entities in Seward. Some were focused on residential lot development, others on other things, and that really goes back before my time. S A D C was an attempt to coordinate those efforts, right? The idea was why have competing sort of uncoordinated economic development efforts in Seward? S A D C was an attempt to, um, better consolidate and coordinate those efforts. The intent of S A D C has always been to be replaced by Seward County Economic Development. The, the two are, are repetitive, there is no reason to have both. The reason S A D C has not gone away is that, you know, there's been some funding questions related to Seward County Economic Development. And there were times when, you know, we talked about dissolving S A D C, but didn't do so for fear that maybe, you know. S C E D C was going to go away and we'd want to have that sort of as a fallback organization. I'm pleased to say, I think we're all beyond that now, but Sid, you're correct, S A D C is not, I mean, we need, and we've focused on managing the property we have, which has. I think Jonathan could report, there are some leads, both related to the former Dan Bread Building and the, the ground we own by the west, uh, the, on the west side of town. So there have been some leads related to that, that we've been managing. But in terms of promoting economic development in Seward, you're correct, our organization has really turned that over to Jonathan. And we'd like to, um, turn the rest of our functions over so that again, we can have one effective. and we'd like to, um, turn the rest of our functions over so that, again, we can have one effective, coordinated, um, you know, thoughtful approach to economic development and not kind of a piecemeal approach. That's a great question.
Chris?
What, uh, what happens to current Chamber employees? I mean, you kind of, you kind of hit everything except exactly that piece, so everybody can hear what happens.
So, we don't have a formal entity yet, because we haven't formalized it. But once we have our organizational meeting, that formal entity will be in a position to hire a CEO. And so, that CEO will then have the opportunity to staff according to, you know, what will work best for them under that structure that we've laid out. And so, I think either it would just be a conversation with the CEO about, here's the current employees that are part of his picture, and working through with them and the Board of Directors to see what that looks like.
And, and just so others can hear, 'cause I've been involved in conversations that others may not have, what is the reaction of Chamber members then to, to this whole process and the fact that Chamber is now gonna be a different organization?
I think for the most part, it's been pretty positive. I think, you know, I presented at a Chamber luncheon, um, maybe three weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, and I think, you know, a month ago. Um, I think that there was a lot of questions like, what's going on, what does this look like, you know, just a lot of angst over not knowing. And so, I think that that was a, a good starting point to like, really try to share with them, you know, kind of where we had come to. And so, I think some of the questions are answered, I think there's still questions about, what does it look like specifically? How does it change in my world, like my little piece of the world as a Chamber member? But I think we've also seen some positive things happen, which we weren't expecting, where people have kind of come out of the woodwork and said, you know, I haven't been that active in the Chamber, but I really like the direction you're heading, I love the vision, I wanna be, like, give you more money and be more supportive. So, I mean, I think it's, um, I think it's an ongoing process, but I think in general, it's been positive.
You might mention the Chamber vote.
Uh, and I, I wasn't at the Chamber vote, so I don't know the specifics, Kathy, do you wanna?
Sure. So, at the annual extravaganza, which is the annual business meeting, um,
I guess I was there.
Sort of balance. Balance for the voting members, and it was a unanimous vote to move forward with the Board of Directors' recommendation to dissolve and support and merge into this new Chamber development.
I knew there was a vote, I just didn't realize it was unanimous, so thank you.
Jessica, money-wise, we make our decisions for, on October.
Right.
How does that fit in with your budget?
I think it works fine, um, you know, the money that you've already allocated would, provided you were comfortable with it moving forward into the new entity, we wouldn't be asking for any more allocation.
This year?
This year, we would be asking for the same amount of allocation, number one, if we're in the following year, so this October, I guess. So, I think that would fit with your budget program.
Yes, Ellen?
The resolution, did you read over that, the resolutions and the, and the budget?
Yeah, I have no objection to the form of the resolution.
And what, just to recap, what exactly would you, are you asking of the council this evening? I didn't want to be in confusion, 'cause there's a lot of, there's a number of items on here, but as far as what were you hoping to accomplish tonight? And if it's not everything on here, then what's the timetable moving out on the remaining items?
Um, Kathy can talk about this a little bit, but most of the other organizations we've presented to you, I think we've, is this our last one to move forward with? Except for Arts Council, so, um, we've been with the, the Melford City Council, the Utica, Village, or, I'm sorry, who else?
Yeah, Village Trustees.
Village Trustees, um, the other organizations, so, uh, you know, quite honestly, as much as you're comfortable with moving forward with tonight, we would appreciate it. Um, but we certainly understand if you need time to consider some things and ask more questions.
Just a, an, an order question, um, one of them, like E, was us doing a resolution, appointing council members. So, my understanding is, does your organization even exist yet?
It will exist formally on
So, it does not tonight, as of now?
Right.
Okay, so, I don't, I think we can't do E, because Josh or Mayor, I don't think you can appoint someone to an organization that doesn't yet exist, right?
I'd have to check with Kelly, but I would assume I could appoint someone contingent on the organization coming into existence.
I think so.
If the organization never came into existence, then the person just
It would never have, okay.
Wouldn't matter, would be my guess.
And I guess that we'd like to have, if possible, that person be involved with the original organizational meeting.
Right, that makes sense.
You want a city council member, you want a city, like, city administrator?
We've had, um, everyone stood it differently, so like, in Melford, they, they picked a city council person. Utica said, we wanted it to be our president of the commercial club. So, we are comfortable with whatever in your council would be like, it be a staff person, or a city council member, or the mayor, or whatever you would like to do. Poor Bruce is looking and be like, no.
And I think my understanding is, this is for organizational purposes, there would be bylaws as well in the organization. And the city would have, um, I believe currently would have one member on that board. Um, and so, you know, it gets a little bit, I mean, that's worth a discussion at some point, if not tonight, is because on the S C E D C board, we have two members, one from, one's a council member and the one is, is myself or a designated, um, who, who would go to those meetings. And so, with having only one member, because we, we are different than the other communities, and that being a first-class city, we have, uh, a council and a separate elected mayor position in administration, which they don't, theirs is merged into one body. So, I don't know if that's important to the council, we had kicked around the idea of maybe an ex, like a non-voting ex officio member. If adding another actual voting person throws everything out of whack, then I would, uh, I would recommend having, and, and this is for down the road, but having a non-voting ex officio person, either myself or a designated, who can then be there to answer questions that may come up. Because oftentimes, the questions that come up, like S C E D C, have to do with, you know, what's your water capacity? What's your electric capacity? What's the zoning look like? How do we change that? And those are usually questions better suited for the city administrator and, and department heads to address. But for these purposes, I believe, you know, if you wanted to go in that direction, we could have somebody from the council appoint for the, yeah, organizational portion of this, so I don't, the fact there isn't an organization, I don't think necessarily would prevent that. But it's a good question, 'cause we are kind of, court, cart and horse are kind of hit and run into each other a little bit, did you have something?
Just, just two other questions, and probably Kelly, this is more for you. On D and E, um, D talks about amending or transferring the current funding agreements. And then E talks about appointing a council member to represent the city at the organizational meeting and to establish a new funding agreement. And so, I would think that if we just transfer the existing funding, there's no need in E to have a council member that would be negotiating any new funding agreement, right? I mean, that's totally a council's decision, right?
I think what's common to, and is, the way I understand it, is an assignment of the existing funding agreements over to this new entity once it's formed. So, I, I, whether an actual new agreement needs to be drafted and memorialized at this present time, I don't think so. There will be a new one come October, come budget time, and that would be the new funding agreement that would have to be drafted.
So, does, does E even have to happen?
I think E is, is consideration of the proposed resolution of support is really what it is. And I, and, and when looking at these items, I think A, B, and C are, are kind of all wrapped up in the re, in the resolution of support. I don't necessarily know if you procedurally have to go vote on A, B, C, and D, I think E is the resolution of support, which encompasses A through D, but
So, instead of a new, instead of having, say, a new funding agreement, we would just go back up and substitute transferring the funding agreement?
Kelly, at this point, do we even need a resolution? I mean, can, can we not support this organization, assign a council member to help get it formed? And then if a resolution needs to come back to the council to formalize something, if it needs to be formalized, do it at that point?
You could sure do that, yes, I think.
I mean, I think, I, I think that's the way we should go. You know, in, in, in reality is, here's where we're at. You know, every year we get to budget time, we get a request from the Chamber, we get a request from S C E D C. And there's always the back and forth, it always comes down to, what have you done for me lately? You want what? Show, show me the results. You know, and a little bit of it has been, it's been a scattered approach to try and get things done. So, trust me, I'm leery of this thing, and, and exactly how it's gonna work, who's gonna manage the day-to-day? Is a board gonna be managing a president slash CEO, taking us a direction? Is the city gonna try and manage this president, CEO? I mean, how's, how's this gonna work? So, that, that, that's where my question falls, how's this really gonna work? So, but the reality is, we've finally got a group of people coming together trying to get something done. The exciting part for me out of all of this is the word vision, and not so much the everyday economic development things that need to happen. It's the group coming together and planning a vision for Seward County, making us a desirable place to be, and people wanting to be here. I mean, we have plenty of good qualities, we need to start tooting the horn and, and make, make people realize who we are. You know, you talk to people about Seward County and Seward in particular, oh, you guys gotta love B Square, okay? Well, let's focus our energies and put them in the same place. I'm not interested in a long-term commitment to this group, we need to see if it's gonna work. The reality is, we need to give it a shot. And so, the real, that being the reality, they're gonna get the current funding that we've given to these other groups when this group forms. And then we're gonna be in the budget season, and they're only gonna have six months under their belt. Well, six months isn't a timeframe to say, this group has been successful, it's doing what we expected. So, we better be knowing we're gonna go down the road for at least another twelve months. And, and give them that funding, and give them a chance to make this work.
But if, if you're gonna support the group, I think you're probably gonna want to have a seat on the Board of Directors and somebody at the organizational meeting, probably think if you want to support it. And watch your voice, you know, as a part of this group, you need to have that representation. So, you need to probably vote on C and E separately, because C appoints the, the rep for the board, E's the person that sits at the organizational meeting, getting this thing started.
So, you want us to do three resolutions, one of the two appointments?
I, I don't think it's an actual resolution at all. It's a, a motion to support the group, a motion to appoint, or Josh wants to appoint somebody tonight, or if you need to wait until next week. We have another meeting next Tuesday, when, when's organizational meeting?
I'm sorry, Kelly?
I think you just go through them now, I mean, if you're
What's that?
I think, I think if you, I changed my mind, I think you just go through E. If you want, if you want all of those different resolutions acted upon or voted on, or
Well, I'm just asking, does it need to be a resolution?
No, it's just a, just one resolution.
I have a question though for you, before this gets more complicated.
Do my best.
Um, so, I don't have any issue appointing someone for the purposes of the organizational meeting, but we're not approving bylaws tonight, correct?
No, that would come once the organizational meeting occurs, correct?
So, the, the issue as far as like, with the city of Seward, 'cause I do think our position is unique compared to the other members, is, you know, what about an ex officio position if there isn't the possibility for a second person? So, I'm a little leery about C for the Board of Directors' appointment. I see that appointment as being different than the organizational?
No, it's the same.
It's the same person?
That would be, I think, the hope.
Well,
One seat on the board, so.
Right, so the, so I guess my point is, is that, I do think is, I mean, having an ex officio person, even if they're not voting from the administration, I think from an informational standpoint, is important. Is that a still possibility?
Take it to the organizational meeting and have your representative bring it up to the organizational meeting.
Right, and if I were appointing someone to do that, my question is, and what's the difference between that and the Board of Directors if the Board of Directors doesn't exist yet?
How do you want it?
I mean, I realize it's a chicken and egg, and I'm not trying to be
No, I know you're not, I, I know you're not.
I'm frustrated, because it's like, you know, we're being asked to do A through E tonight, and, and I don't have any problem with this. I've talked to Chris as council president, of whether he would want to be this person to represent at the organizational meeting. But I don't know that he has signed up to be the Board of Director. And we have not had that conversation, so that's my, why being hesitant is that
The organizational meeting will be of the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors will call the organizational meeting and they'll go through
So, there's really no difference between C and E?
No, there is no difference.
Okay, well, then I'm confused why there's C and E, Sid.
So, then, I'm confused between A and B, because I think that, was, why do we have to adopt the vision statement? All we really need to do is support the new organization, which is B.
Well, I think the, the vision statement, my understanding, was just so that everyone's on the same page. It's not a binding thing, it's, it, it, there's no teeth, so to speak, it's just getting everyone to say, here's, here's, we all can agree that these are all the good things that we want for the community. So, I guess I don't have a concern with that, especially from a legal standpoint, I have no concerns, I don't know if Kelly would either. 'Cause again, it's just, it's a vision statement, it's like, a vision statement, so
And I, we certainly understand when you're chicken and yank, and we get it, we, we sat in our meetings trying to work through some of that ourselves, so I understand wrestling.
Now, I'm about to appoint Chris, and Chris has no, he just signed up for a twelve-year commitment.
Maybe, maybe twelve.
Draw the check they gave you.
The director can always resign.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm kidding, but I'm just saying is, I just wanted to make sure that, 'cause this wasn't part of our discussion prior to the meeting, I didn't wanna put Chris on the spot.
It'd have to be a twelve-year internship.
It could. So, I guess moving forward then, um, we, let's just start with, with, and, and obviously, we have more discussion if you want. But let's start with eight A, this is consideration of adopting the vision statement, and any principles of new organization. Is there any discussion on this item, or would someone like to make a motion?
I move adoption of the vision statement.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And the motion in the second to adopt item eight A, is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. So, how do you wanna handle B, Kelly, or do you want to?
I mean, it's up to the council, they can, I mean, you're showing your support for the proposed new organization by passing E, so I really don't know that you have to actually vote on B.
Okay, so then let's go, so then, and C is taking care of with E as well, so let's
Yes, if that person is indeed the same person.
That wasn't as well as a fair, okay, so then let's go to D, do we do D then, Kelly, the trans, transferring? Or should we do E first?
I think it would be good to have on record the council's approval of assigning those, those current funding agreements to this new entity if it gets formed.
So, that's D?
Yes.
So, is there any discussion on D, or would someone like to make the, the motion?
Do we need to change the motion per what?
Yes, I would, I would recommend the proposed motion B to, if this entity gets formed, to assu, approve of the assignment of the existing funding agreements to the new incorporated. So, it'd be the existing funding agreements with the Chamber and the S C E D C.
So, that's the language, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll move.
We have a motion in a second, is ready for the discussion? Over here. Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes. Then for E, um, did we, what, still want to do the resolution then, Kelly, or what did you just, I don't know, recommend that, okay. So, we have the resolution, and then appointing the council member to represent the city, um,
And I'd, I'd recommend that if somebody's, you know, if you have somebody to appoint, have that person in the actual motion.
Okay, well, but, do we do, are we following our standard of resolution steps?
Sure.
Okay, so the, on the res, so, okay, so first of all, is there any discussion on this resolution before we start?
What, what is the, what is the new funding agreement as opposed to transferring of the existing?
We wouldn't do the new funding agreement this time, this is simply the resolution, um,
It's a proposal of passage of the resolution that's in the package.
So, we can scratch that part of this, right? We're not establishing a new funding agreement?
Correct, we just, we just assigned it, and so, yeah, we've already done the transfer.
Right, but, but this one says, and to establish a new funding agreement.
There's not gonna be a, a new agreement this time.
No, it would be in October.
In October.
I think we clean up this res, resolution more than next week.
With our attention.
Yes.
That's next week.
So.
Can we still assign somebody?
Would you be okay, as an organization, if we were, if we were, as a council, were to approve the appointment of someone to the organizational meeting? And then we come back next week and have this resolution then cleaned up a little bit and have it presented at that time? Does that cause problems for you?
I, I think that's okay, yeah.
Is that okay?
That's okay.
Okay, so we will go ahead and table the resolution this evening with the understanding that we will have these items cleaned up. And, and Kelly may be in contact with either you or Kathy to make sure that the understanding is correct. And then we do have a council meeting a week from tonight, so we can then present it at that time on the agenda. In the meantime, for organizational purposes, I would appoint council president Chris Schmidt to that role as our representative for the organizational meeting purposes.
Move approval.
Second.
That would fantastic.
Should we have, there's time for further discussion, right?
He had a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like to throw out there, while I appreciate you guys' confidence in me, you've elected me president twice, I get to oversee Personnel Committee, Audit Committee, Finance Committee. Anyone who'd like to spread the wealth, I'm offering the wealth out. There's a lot of other people. There's a new young member on our team, John Wilkin.
That sounded hurt.
I resigned from that position.
So we have a motion in a second. Great speech.
You can always resign.
I mean, Chris, if you, if you really don't want to, I'll do it to your honor.
I'd support that.
I would support Ellen.
Okay, well, I appointed Chris, so I'll withdraw my appointment with Chris. I'll make sure you're okay. Yeah, but I appointed the person, so.
We need to withdraw the motion?
But it's not.
We didn't vote on him?
Yes, okay. Or, or voted in, Chris. So we'll put, we'll just, okay, leave, to make this clean, um, that we have a motion in a second. Who was the second? Did you want to withdraw the second?
Yeah.
Would you like to draw your first?
Yes.
Okay, the motion's been withdrawn. I will then appoint Ellen to that organizational meeting.
I move it.
We have a motion.
Move approval.
And a second, 'cause now is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, you're really appreciated.
Thank you.
Is there a possibility of another comment?
Did you want to add something?
I just wanted to make a comment about what, what's, is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, Diane Garsky, four thirty-two South Columbia Avenue. I here as a representative for the, um, county board and also for the economic development. I just wanted to say thank you. Um, I feel like economic development has really been in a constant evolving state for a number of years. And that every time we've made, um, some changes and done some collaboration, it's gotten stronger and better. And I just want to say, I think this is gonna be another step in that. And, um, the county voted today to support this as well, and so I just want to thank you. I think the city and the county have collaborated well together in the past, and I look forward to that continuing, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to item number nine, consideration of approval of revised job description for accounting assistant budget administrator. Bruce?
After a lot of discussion and with the auditor and with the personnel audit finance committee and then Bonnie and I and the staff. I think we've come to the realization that we do need an accountant, um, to hire. We budgeted for it, it's been in there for a couple of years now. So we've revised the job description a little bit, and so what we're asking for tonight is for approval of the, of the new job description, the revised one, and then allow us to go ahead and advertise that position.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, we'd like to. So, I mean, this was, we had, was it two meetings ago when we met, our committee?
January nineteenth.
So, and we, we discussed this, our committee reviewed it. We've reviewed the job description too many times, you can probably see it in our sleep. So, something that came up, actually a disrecommendation came out of an audit at one point, and so it's been a long time coming, but I think it'd be a good deal.
Any other questions or comments? Or would someone like to make a motion?
I would make the motion. Second.
We have a motion to approve the revised job description for accounting assistant slash budget administrator in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Item number ten, consideration for approval of a request for proposal for consultant to conduct a wage and benefit comparability study. Bruce?
This goes along with, uh, some of the things we've talked about with cost of living and different things like that, but it's comparability. We're supposed to do these on a regular basis. We haven't done a full-blown cost and, or benefit and comparability study since 2012. And so you'll see there's an R F P in here. We'd like to, uh, go out and get that done, get the R F P done. So we can do a new comparability study this summer, so we can budget for, well, this, as soon as we can, so we can use that to budget for the next budget section.
Any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Barb?
So we're just doing the R F P right now?
You're just approving the R F P, right?
Any other questions or comments? Someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve the R F P.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. It says on or off?
I turned it off.
Item eleven, city administrator's report. Bruce?
Um, just quickly, we closed on the golf course on the first, so I sent out an email with a new sign and I think it looks great. Uh, we did hire Dan Kahler as the green superintendent and Drew Marr as the golf shop manager. They're out there, Drew's been working a few days getting things lined out. Dan's pretty much been helping us move snow, so that's worked out good. Um, you can see the rest of the report, but going back to the vault that we got, I said we were getting a $6,000 grant for. They ended up with extra money at the end of the year that they had to spend, so we ended up with a $9,253 grant, and the vault costs $15,000. So for about $6,000, we got a car with 38,000 miles on it, and it's, it's a neat little car. We've, we've taken it, you know, around quite a bit and, uh, and it's, it took two gallons of gas to go to Omaha and back. So once it used its battery, it took two gallons of gas, so it's, that's working really well, so.
Questions, yes?
Just on the, the golf course related thing, as far as the, well, since I'm a golfer, as far as the, uh, the fees?
Yes.
Is there a system in place at this point where if people want to join as a?
Yes.
As a fee?
Yes, it's all set up.
And a check to the city or?
We've been collecting, yeah, you can bring it to city hall and pay, or you can go out to the golf shop. Drew's hours right now are ten to three.
Is that on the website at all, the city website or?
Yes, the golf course is on the website. You have to go to Park and Recreation, then click on Golf Course.
Okay, but it, it instructs you, if you want to like join, how to do it?
It has the fees on there, but you can either come to city hall or go out to the golf course.
Okay.
Ten to three, Tuesday through Saturday, you'll be here, and then when it warms up.
And we'll be sending out, uh, an email and a letter for those who don't have email, to the most recent members, just to letting them, updating them on what's been going on and, and, and where we're at in this. 'Cause I assume, with the snow on the ground, they're probably not thinking about it too much, but once the snow melts, they're gonna start wanting to, wanting to know. And, uh, we did talk about also about doing a, a payment plan if you, if you were gonna do it. So you won't have to write one check if you want to be a, um, a member, or we're calling them more of a, of a seasonal golf pass, is essentially where there's a little of a pool pass. But if you don't want to do it all with one check, you can spread it out over a number of month, months, just to try to, again, the idea is making it easy on as many people who want to do it to be able to do it.
I bet people ask me about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and that, that'll be in the letter too.
Are we, are we gonna paper splash it all that?
I think there will be one on Wednesday. I believe there'll be an article on Wednesday.
There'll be an article tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
We could do an advertisement if that's what you want to do.
I think we sold like five annual passes so far, but we found a lot of people calling about it.
All right, it would, unless there are any other questions or comments, if someone like to make a motion to accept the city administrator's report?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. All right, um, upcoming events, we have the, we had the annual city employee recognition event that was, um, February fifth. Uh, we also have on February twenty-second and the twenty-third, the Nebraska League of Municipalities Midwinter Conference in Lincoln. If you are interested in attending any of the sessions or lunches, let us know. Uh, they, they, they often have, um, some pretty helpful sessions. Uh, and item C then is, uh, the Nebraska Annual Planning and Zoning Conference from March ninth to the eleventh in Karno. Does anyone else have any events they'd like to mention? Not seeing anything. Then we'll move on to, um, number fourteen, motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. John, you're gonna have to flip yours back up. All right, please display the votes. Thank you.